The judiciary and government have stopped shy of enforcing them. We are gathered here this afternoon to explore ways that we ensure that the citizens take benefit of this rights and they do not remain on paper. It is on this note that I do not only have the pleasure, but I also have the singular honor of welcoming you most heartily to this August gathering, believing that at the end of our stay here, we would have sufficiently motivated those concerned to ensure that they do that which is right and the society becomes what it truly is. Our welcome is big enough to encompass you all. And so I say welcome and enjoy your stay. Thank you.
Thank you very much Steve Abba for your welcome address. Next, I'd like to bring up the Chairman MBA Section on Public Interest and Development Law, Dr. Monday Ubani for his welcome address.
Thank you, the MC. You have established a very long protocol. And I think it is important that I abide by it. But that will not stop me from mentioning, my Lord, the Chairman of this great occasion. It took us so much trouble to really beg her to be here because she was not originally penciled down as a chairperson. Thank you, my Lord, for all the trouble you took in order to be here. We appreciate you. Also, the Honorable Member of the House Chairman, and then all the Lennox Senior Advocates of Nigeria that are here, the C J of Abia, he came in here yesterday. My Lord, thank you for coming. And of course, I want to recognize also the immediate Chairman of Spidel, and that is Professor Paul Ananava. You are welcome. Thank you. I want to say that it is with excitement that I welcome everybody to this auspicious town hall meeting face of his kind under the present leadership of Spidel. What is this all about on a Monday? First and foremost, it was not easy to assemble these great minds to talk about the very essence of government, which is the provision of security and welfare for the people. The 1999 Constitution under Chapter Two, with the heading Fundamental Objectives and Directive Principle of State Policy, made elaborate provision for those things that make life worth living: education, health, employment, security, and welfare of the citizens. These no doubt should be the focus and form the fulcrum for every government. As fundamental as these socioeconomic rights as provided in the Constitution appear on the face value, the same constitution diverts the courts of its enforcement, typical of every government in this part of the world. They shrink from their natural responsibilities. Do we not generate light in our homes with our generators? To get water, do we not dig boreholes in our homes and offices? Do we not provide our security in our homes and offices in Nigeria? For health, do we not go to native doctors for treatment? We thank God for the herbs that are bound here in large quantity. Do we not construct our roads? And where it is impossible due to complexity, do we not buy SUVs to use? Having in mind our deliberated rules, tell me what we do not provide for ourselves in Nigeria. But somebody has said, what we don't provide does not exist. Why are the terms of our social contract not met as we have it in other nations? The essence of this gathering, gentlemen and ladies, is to remind major stakeholders in Nigeria that time to enforce the terms of the Fundamental Objective and Directive Principle of State Policy is now. Enough of rhetorics and empty promises. As we approach 2023 general election, the agenda for governance must be set and met. Nothing is fundamental about our human right in Chapter Four if the socioeconomic right that is provided for in Chapter Two are not giving any proper meaning. Your life and mine are empty if there are no medical facility to preserve it. Our existence is terribly threatened if that life can be cut short at any time by a bandit, armed robber, kidnapper, or war steel, a terrorist. In all this, in this hall, are our judicial officers who owe the citizen the responsibility to interpret the Constitution to manifest the intent and purpose for its existence. We have politicians here. We have lawyers. We have the civil society group. We have journalists of repute and other major stakeholders in Project Nigeria that are all here for one purpose, for emphasis. Here, they are here to redirect governance of the people in the right direction. Let every right that is a right be enforced. Simple. Once again, I welcome everyone to this great event. Let the conversation begin. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Monday Ubani. And to give the final welcome address, please join me distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, to welcome our chief host for today, who is the President of the Nigerian Bar Association, Mr. Olumede Apata.
The Chairman of today's occasion, my Lord, the Honorable Justice Ogumiju. Let me join my voice to that of the Chairman of Spidel, to thank you, my Lord, for taking out time. I think we all know how busy the court is, and my Lord is sitting tomorrow. And those of us who know my Lord is know that she is not perfunctory when it comes to the when it comes to carrying out her judicial responsibilities. So I know that this is a huge sacrifice to be with us here today, my Lord. I am most grateful. Sitting next to me, Lord, is the Honorable Onofyoklu, Chairman of the House Committee on Judiciary. I also know that it was a huge sacrifice for you to be here today, and the bar to which you belong is grateful to you. Thank you very much. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, I will rest very easily on the already established protocol as I welcome you all to this very important town hall meeting organized by the Nigeria Bar Association Section on Public Interest and Development Law. I thank you all for coming. It is a Monday morning. Cannot have been easy for many of us to be here today. And I say that I hope the section will make the event worthwhile, and we will not regret being here today and giving of our time so generously. So I welcome you all, members of the inner and the outer bar. I also want to thank beforehand those who have volunteered to be part of our stellar cast of presenters today. Thank you, because I know that you have also put in a lot before today's event to be here today. And I want to thank your coordinator, Kule Ajabwe, who has done a stellar job in this regard. Thank you very much, Kule. It is my pleasure to welcome you all to and to deliver this welcome remarks at the town hall meeting organized by the NBA Spidel with the theme Justicibility of Chapter Two of the 1999 Constitution, the need for the Nigerian judicial system to be more proactive. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, it is nothing short of an extraordinary coincidence that this town hall meeting is taking place literally on the same day INEC has published the notice of election from EC 60A to officially signal the commencement of election activities towards the national elections taking place in February and March 2023. The next consequential stage of the electoral process will be the dishing out of electoral promises by different aspirants and candidates. The question therefore has to be asked, how have the governments at all levels fared in the fulfillment of their promises of the past and in the enforcement of the social contract with the Nigerian people? It is a well-known fact that we have an entire chapter in the 1999 Constitution dedicated to the provision of socioeconomic rights. We call it the Fundamental Objectives and Directive Principles of State Policy. That chapter provides in no unclear terms that it shall be the duty and responsibility of all organs of government and of all authorities and persons exercising legislative executive or judicial powers to conform to, observe, and apply the provisions of this chapter of the Constitution. How have we fared? To answer this question, let us take a look at some raw numbers. The World Poverty Clock records Nigeria as the country with the highest number of persons, about 90 million of them, living in extreme poverty and unwanted feat that we attained after overtaking India. When you consider the fact that the population of India is almost seven times that of Nigeria, then you can understand the implication of this statistic. According to data from the government-run National Bureau of Statistics, unemployment rates in Nigeria is at an all-time high of about 33% with almost 65% of the country's youth either unemployed or underemployed. Sometime last year, the National Nations Minister of State for Education, Chukwemeka Wajuba, was reported to have said that Nigeria has the highest number of out-of-school children, over 10 million in Sub-Saharan Africa. Another unwanted statistic comes from UNICEF, and it reveals that one in every five of the world's out-of-school children is in Nigeria. UNICEF further claims that even though primary education is officially free and compulsory in Nigeria, another 10 and a half million of the country's children aged between five and 14 years are not in school. Only 61% of those who are aged between six to 11 regularly attend primary school, and only 35.6% of those aged between 36 and 59 months receive early childhood education. Furthermore, although Nigeria is regarded as the largest economy in Africa with a GDP of around $500 million, a close look at the practical macroeconomic indices reveals that this does not necessarily impact on the bottom line of the average Nigerian. For instance, Nigeria is not in the top 15 of the highest per capita income in Africa, in Africa, and Nigeria's inflation rate is higher than the average for Africa and Sub-Saharan countries. Furthermore, or further still, Nigeria's infrastructure deficit is so high that it is widely accepted to be one of the biggest factors holding back the country's growth and development. While there have been different projections, let us use that of Boss Mustafa, the Secretary of Government, who stated sometime in June 2021 that about $2.3 trillion is needed to bridge the infrastructure deficit in Nigeria over the next 22 years. On top of all of this, or all of these, Nigeria is undoubtedly laboring under the burden of humongous domestic and foreign debt, with the country proposing to spend 36.5 of the 2022 budget to service debts while still planning to borrow another 5.12 trillion to finance this year's budget deficit. According to the Debt Management Office, as of Q3 2021, the total external debt of the Federal Government of Nigeria stands at $37.96 billion US dollars. I do not believe that there's anyone in this room today who is not worried about the numbers that I have reeled out above. I have not even mentioned the gross failure of government to secure the lives and properties of Nigerians, which is the raison d'etre of government and the reason why the people gave up a part of their liberties to government. It is for these and other reasons that the MBA Section on Public Interest and Development Law has decided to host this, to host this meeting and to invoke the much-needed conversation around the need for us to stop paying lip service to the provisions of the socioeconomic rights, to the provision of socioeconomic rights to Nigerians. As Dr. Ubani, our Chairman, correctly noted, correctly noted in the publicity materials leading up to this event, the essence of this meeting is to arouse the consciousness of the various critical institutions in Nigeria that have the constitutional mandate to provide socioeconomic rights to Nigerians. While the emphasis will today be on the judiciary and to examine how the courts can be more creative in the interpretation of the provisions of Chapter Two, which even law students know are not justiciable, strictly speaking, it is nevertheless pertinent to hear from other arms of government and other relevant institutions and organizations today. In this regard, I particularly look forward to the lead speakers' presentations at both sessions as well as the various plenary discussions that will follow. As we begin the countdown to the 2023 election season, characterized by another round of political promise-making, it is time to take account and to put these issues in proper perspective. The Nigerian government can and must do better in the provision and safeguarding of the socioeconomic rights of Nigerians. Once again, it is my pleasure to welcome you all to this event, and I wish all of us pleasant and fruitful deliberations. I thank you.
Thank you very much, President Nigerian Bar Association. Next, ladies and gentlemen, as we move on with today's town hall meeting, it's my honor and it gives me great pleasure to bring up for the opening remarks, the Chairman of today's occasion, Justice of the Supreme Court, Honorable Justice Helen Ogumiju, my Lord.
Good afternoon, everybody. Let me, I'm very tall, so if I stand on existence protocol, protocol very tall indeed. So I stand on the protocols. Chairman, President of the Bar, duly recognized, Lennox Senior Advocates, my Lord, Justice CJ Emo State, Abi State, sorry, duly recognized, Lennox Senior Advocates, duly recognized. It gives me great pleasure to be here, although I don't know why the president decided to single out the judiciary as the person to push this agenda, as the body in one of the three arms of government to push this agenda. Because what I have here on this, and I go by this, is pragmatic measures for government accountability in respect of the topic in view, the justicability of Chapter Two of the 1999 Constitution as ordered. As the President said, we all know that by sections 13 to 24 of the 1999 Constitution, these provisions, I didn't want to elevate them to to say they are rights, because when you say they are rights, they are mandatory. The way the Constitution has put it has put it as obligations of government and not mandatory provisions of government. So, and the same Constitution that says the government is obliged to provide these things, says they are not justiciable. That is Section Six, Six C of the same Constitution. In, over the years, you know, political philosophers, Jean Jacques Rousseau, Thomas Hobbes, all of them, John Locke, Engels, and of course, the socialist block in academia, have always advocated for these socioeconomic rights. And the preamble to our Constitution talks about the unity, the harmony, the promotion of equality and justice. And you talk about economic justice, social justice, equality before the law, governance, peace and security. But this discussion, I think, we're expecting the speakers to take us from the level of these rights being merely obligatory to the level of there then being fundamental rights that is part of what the society expects, the three arms of government, not the judiciary alone, the three arms of government, the policymakers as the executive, the lawmakers as the legislature, and the judiciary who interpret the law to elevate these rights from mere obligations to mandatory needs of society. So we are talking about these rights, which include dignified labor, environmental rights, access to healthcare, food and water, social security and all that. So, since the president, I would say, threw down the gauntlet to say, must be the judiciary that would wave the magic wand, even though we've been told that these rights are not justiciable. Well, I would like to say and follow Sylvia Marika, she read his book Manifesto of Equals. If everyone is equal, as long as they are equal under the law, I think that's as far as we go. Everyone is equal as long as they are equal under the law. Question is, is everyone really equal under the law? That's, those are the questions I'm sure the panelists are coming to answer. I'm not going to answer that. So, and we are looking forward to robust discussions on this very important topic. It affects all of us. Even if you are very rich, you are very powerful, you can isolate yourself from the need to have these obligations of government performed by the three arms of government. You have relatives who are by force attached to you, who may not have the insulation you have. So I think that's why this topic has come at a very important period in our times, in this country. And I hope that, and I know that the panelists, very important group of learned lawyers and social activists and legislators have come to do justice to it. Thank you very much. I welcome you all.
Thank you very much. You may please be seated. You know, when I look around and I see the caliber of very important personalities who have graced these occasion and who will be speaking at our panel conversations, it tells me one thing, that we are truly passionate about the implementation and the justicability of the socioeconomic rights of Nigerians. And that tells me one thing as well, that we are one step in the right direction. It's also known that other countries have experienced this, and if we take a look at India, for example, they have been able to resolve this because there has been so much judicial activism in India to promote the inseparableness, the indivisibility, and the interrelatedness of human rights. And guess what? This has paid off. So we hope that today, at the end of our conversations, we are able to actually bring out and then resolve to practicable measures to make this a possibility in Nigeria. Once again, I'd love to warmly welcome everyone to this conversation. I'm particularly looking forward to it. I'm a youth. And I know that there's something we call the Jackass Syndrome, which is why a lot of my colleagues, a lot of my peers are leaving the country. But we do hope that at the end of our conversations today, things can change because we have different stakeholders who can make this happen here. Let's get on with the conversations today, and it's my honor to bring up our lead presenter. He is an award-winning human rights activist, a foremost human rights activist of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Very distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, please join me as I welcome Femi Falano S A N. He is our lead presenter for today.
Me, my lady, the Honorable Justice Morom Kiji Ogumiju, the President of the Bar. Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, I'm not going to adopt any protocol. And we must, we must learn to do what they do in international conferences, since we attend international conferences. It is only in Nigeria where programs are started with prayers. Is it assumed in other countries that you are likely to have prayed in your home? Two, this business of listing everybody and at the end of the day, all protocols duly observed. Again, it's a Nigerian phenomenon. Madam Chair, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to adopt a slightly different approach. And this is based on existing authorities. I'm going to surprise you by saying that we have left where the MBA is with respect to justicability of Chapter Two. And I stand by saying that notwithstanding the several decisions of our courts, lawyers and judges in the High Court continue to insist that they are guided by the the belief as enunciated in the case of Archbishop Okoye and Attorney General of Lagos State. We've left that case. It's no longer relevant. Unfortunately, our High Court judges now penalize public interest litigators for having the temerity to embarrass the government by filing cases under Chapter Two of the Constitution. In fact, lawyers are now made to pay fines for coming to court to enforce socioeconomic rights. I'm not going to take your time, but there are two approaches adopted by the Nigerian Supreme Court and the Indian Supreme Court. But before I go to these two courts, let me challenge two myths. One, we are told in our constitutional law classes that human rights were adopted in Nigeria to allay the fears of the minority groups. No. And I say this because we had our independence, flagged independence in 1960. The Indian had the independence in 1949. Ghana had its own independence in 1957. Each of the countries that obtained independence from the British colonial regime had a bill of rights in their constitution. So there was nothing peculiar. So there was nothing peculiar, nothing about minorities. A bill of rights was entrenched in our nineteen sixty constitution. Not necessarily in the interest of Nigerians, not because the British believe that we were entitled to human rights, because throughout the over hundred years that they were here, they never respected the human rights of Nigerians in spite of the Magna Carta, who were not entitled to have human rights. But when they were living as they have done in Ghana, India and other places, they wanted to protect their own interests. If these guys get their independence, they may subject it to human rights abuse. So let us insist that they should put a bill of rights in their constitution. Two, chapter two was not put in the constitution because they wanted to copy the Indian model. I think Professor Wabose has said this repeatedly, but it was in the Constitution Draft Committee. But there were forty-nine members, two who are not lawyers, two historians caused a problem in the House. The late Dr. Bala Osman of ABU and Dr. Shabon Shaba of Ife, formerly of Ife, Obama Law University. The two of them made it clear to the Williams, F R O Williams Committee, we cannot go along with you guys because you are serving the interests of the bourgeoisie. And so they wrote their own minority report. Where they were asking for a socialist reconstruction of Nigeria. But they wrote their own constitution in such a manner that even the majority were persuaded that these guys are talking sex. Hence, it was a negotiation. We are going to put chapter two in the constitution to take care of your concern, which represented the interests of the majority of our people. That was how chapter two came on board. But what the Indian Supreme Court did is to say, yes, just like our own chapter two, it's chapter four in India. Their own constitution also provides for fundamental objectives. But what they have done is out of judicial activism, marrying chapter two and four, like our own, by saying there is three and four, by insisting that the fundamental objectives of what to cause socioeconomic rights and political and civil rights are so interconnected that there's no way you can draw a line of dichotomy between them. And so where you are saying, like in our own situation, actions of government shall be humane. There shall be no torture. Right to life is guaranteed. There shall be right to health. Indians, the Indian Supreme Court, particularly led by Justice Krishna Ee, I think it's over a hundred now, said, you cannot have right to life if the means of life are not guaranteed. Therefore, like our own section thirty-three, must be made actualized, must be actualized. So in our own case, I just run through chapter two. This, what the Supreme Court has done here is to say in the case of A G Ondo and A G of the Federation, that chapter two, yes, not justiciable. But there are laws made pursuant to chapter two. Those laws can be enforced in our courts. Of course, section thirteen has imposed a duty on all authorities and persons exercising judicial, executive and legislative powers to enforce chapter two. Registered political parties are compelled by section two to four of the constitution to adopt chapter two as part of the aims and objectives of the party. They will be registered along with the constitutions of the parties. Furthermore, when elected officials are taking their oath of office, oath of allegiance, they undertake that we are going to preserve and enforce chapter two of the constitution. I, I therefore suggest, and I think I will have to take this upon of these days, that if you have sworn by the Holy Bible or the Quran to enforce chapter two of the constitution and it's in the manifesto of your party or the constitution, you now say, sorry, I'm not banned. I think it would be an interesting constitutional case to sue a governor or even the president one of these days. Section fourteen on the government and the people. Section fourteen provides that the security and welfare of all of the people shall be the primary purpose of government. But beyond that, sections two, one, four to two, one, eight provide for, I've imposed a duty on the, I've imposed a duty on the government to guarantee the internal and external security of Nigeria. And that's where you create the Nigerian police force, the armed forces, and there is provision for adequate funding. But what has happened? Through criminal diversion of many meant for the security of our country, we are all in trouble today. Was once defending some soldiers, sixty of them, whose sole offense was that they demanded for weapons. They didn't say they were not ready to fight. Please give us weapons to fight. And for the authorities, that was a serious offense for which they were charged. And when I tried to impress it on the members of the court martial, that these guys, young people are ready to fight. But general so, 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 he had vice martial so, 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 have stolen billions, said Mr. Fallon, you are talking politics. These boys have committed a grave offense and were sentenced to death together with twelve others, but we were able to pursue their matter. Today, they are out. Now, section fourteen, and this is the area that bothers me. When people are accusing the regime, President Bouharri of lopsided appointment, section fourteen, three and four, have imposed a duty on the government, Fedra, state and local government to constitute half cabinets in a way that no part of the country, no section of a state or a local government would dominate the rest of the society. For many of us believe section fourteen is just there for decoration. No. By virtue of section one, five, three of the constitution, the Federal Character Commission is created as a Fedra executive body. In the preamble, I mean, in the schedule to the constitution, the duties of the Federal Character Commission are set out just like we talk of the duties of the A N G C and the other commissions and agencies. In addition to that, we have the Federal Character Commission Act, which provides, if there are two positions in Nigeria, one will go to the north, one will go to the south. If there are four, two, two, if there are six, one will go to each geopolitical zone and so on and so forth. The same thing with distribution of amenities. So you can't have a president taking every amenity to his village. No, it's against the Federal Character Commission Act. Section fifteen, political objectives. The state shall encourage national integration. Again, you can't form a government that is one-sided or lopsided. No, it's against section fifteen. Discrimination is prohibited. There shall be, the government shall secure full resident lives for all citizens. There shall be no, the government shall promote intermarriage among people of different nationalities and religion. But here, if you are a candidate, if you are a lawyer, a senior lawyer, you are freezing to become a D P P in a state or director of civil litigation, when it comes to applying to be a judge, you are suddenly told, go and apply in your state of origin. The lady might have married in another state. It was going to be an incident in Lagos. I didn't know this lady from other. She had become D P P and they said, go to Oshun State. She had never worked in Oshun State for one day. In fact, because her parents are in Lagos, she visited Oshun occasionally, but she was not going to be appointed. And I had to threaten the authorities, including the palace, you know what I mean? I'm sure you know what I mean for those of us in Lagos. If you do appoint this lady who go to court and someone this Mr. Fallon, who don't want your trouble, who will appoint her. And that was how she was appointed. In this area, free movement of persons and goods. Somebody tried to misinterpret this to say it means freedom for the cat, to destroy my farms and my homes. This is where it is also stated that the state shall abolish corruption and abuse of power. This is where our colleagues have done very well. Police, I Bracoba, Director State Security Service on freedom of movement. You're allowed to run a passport. And if they are going to take your passport, the government must get a court order. Jokai Guy and Attorney General of the Federation, the same way. In a member of your escort. The Governor of Data State and Olukule Edu, the Court of Appeal has just insisted that private vehicles are not required to produce roadworthiness certificate on the highway. You know, this is an area where the V I Os make a lot of money by subjecting people to all manners of harassment. And semi-fallen and Chief of Staff Boratai suddenly woke up two years ago and said, every Nigerian must produce their ID card on the highway or your voter's card and so on and so forth. And I wrote to the Chief of Amistad, sorry, you don't have such powers to stop my free movement on the highway. He said, no, you are talking rubbish. Okay, we went to court. Of course, we won the case that if there is going to be any inspection of documents on the highway, only the police can do so. Not soldiers, because we are now fighting a war all over the country. Section sixteen, economic objectives. Our president spoke very eloquently this morning on the destruction of the economy of Nigeria. Section sixteen provides that the government of Nigeria shall control the economy. Today, our economy is controlled by the IMF and World Bank. And they're so arrogant now that they come out to say, increase electricity tariff. Increase this one. This was not what we used to know as Nigerians. Our economy, our currency is already dollarized. Up to now, look at the Central Bank Act, section sixteen, the means of a change in Nigeria is naira and kobo. But government officials now spend dollars. The law has not been amended. Even boys and girls of the rich, including people in power, now dance on naira and dollars. I'm sure you are aware of what I'm talking about. Social media, the circulating audit. If a boy has no means of life, he would, because it's the sound of a president or whatever. One of the players landed in Kanu, most of them chattered and probably for, and we are not asking questions. Now, section four, four, three of the constitution has provided that all mineral resources in our country shall be taken over and shall be vested in the government of the Federation, not the federal government. But what happens now? The president of our country, and this started since we are in a regime. We're just filing a case on this now, that the president has no powers to give oil blocks to his friends. No. Oil blocks belong to Nigeria. So you can't call a retired general and give him an oil block. He has no money to invest. He has no technology. He goes across, he goes offshore, sells the interest and comes back to say, I don't know what to do with money. I have about five hundred million dollars, you know? I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. Now, I now plead out with this president, Mr. President, please, you cannot give oil blocks to your friend. Why don't you, why don't you give them to state governments that are unable to pay salaries? Now, social objectives. And I'm saying here, a lot of laws are being made. No, I, I know, I, I have been warned. A lot of laws are being made in the area of social objectives, National Minimum Wage Act, Labor Act, Pension Reforms Act, Employees Compensation Act, National Health Insurance Act, National Health Act, and so on and so forth. Here again, I had cause to sue the government. But they were giving money to the rich loans. And they were going to run our country aground. Hence, the government set up Amcon. Amcon bought the toxic deaths of the rich, five point eight trillion. And they asked them, go and say no more. Whatever we can take, we take it. You go back. But the government had abolished People's Bank, which was set up to give loans to the poor without collateral. So since the government destroyed our bank, we went to court. The game we won. But let me tell you the saddest aspect. All these cases that have been won in the area of chapter two, the government simply turned the other eye. The government doesn't bother. And this one in particular has unbelievable disdain for the rule of law. We're doing it, some collection now. This government is disobeying about one fifty judgments. Of course, and I hope the MBA will be interested in this fight. We must get this government to comply with the rule of law. Otherwise, we are calling for anarchy. There is a law for the Adali in Nigeria to but you must be seventy and above before you can take advantage of the law. We have laws, we have a law for physically challenged people, Disabilities Law of twenty eighteen. We also have other laws for women, Vapa, Violence Against Persons Act. We have Child's Rights Act, Mr. President. We have U B Act. Both Child's Rights Act and U B Act have provided as imposed a duty on the government of Nigeria to ensure that every child is given free and compulsory education from primary to junior secondary school, nine years. So I was flabbergasted recently when my governor, the governor of Lagos State sought to gas, roam industry or selling wares. And I think the governor was surprised in Lagos. How can this be possible? And give them instant scholarship. Unlike many of us, I, I'm not going to abuse my governor. Whether he has not been passing through the same robes, you know, where we see young people. What I have done in my own case is to, we are currently collecting, We are currently gathering data on other people, young people in all the local governments, so that we can send the list to the governor. Now, let me just rush my paper by saying there are about seven ways. Seven ways of enforcing socioeconomic crimes in our constitution. Uh, one, victims of socioeconomic crime are enjoying to send petition petitions to the National Human Rights Commission. That body is the only one empowered by law to apply and implement all international human rights instrument to which Nigeria, you know, is a signet trick. Two, of what we have discussed, the law that have been made post one to chapter two. The third one where you can challenge their religion court. And as Saturu did in the case of Saturu and Minister of Petroleum, that there is a press control act in Nigeria. So what all this electricity companies do daily by just increasing their tariff. Again, we are caught on this, you know, just to find out how we are going to run this country. Now, fourth, by virtue of the fundamental rights enforcement procedure rules, all the African charter, African charter on human and people's rights, and all international human rights instrument can be applied in our court. African charter in particular contains socioeconomic crisis which are enforceable. But we have the African charter on human and people's rights, ratification and enforcement act. So we can use that to enforce your right. And that is what was done in the case of Joseph Odafi and Attorney General of the Federation. These were prisoners in Portacot who were attested HIV positive, but they were left in the cells. And so a humanized body went to court and said, no, you are endangering the lives of others. So you must remove them and put them in a specialist hospital. The court granted the prayer. Of course, you are aware of Apacha and Fawemi, where the Supreme Court had made the point that since we have, by virtue of section 12 of the constitution, you know, Q to the African charter, it is binding in Nigeria. Fifth, you can go to the Echoas Court to enforce your socioeconomic rights. Serap has done this in about two cases. Sixth, victims of socioeconomic crisis abuse can also send petitions to the African Commission on Human and People's Right in Banjou. Uh, we used to do that a lot under the military when we could not approach our courts. And in many of the cases, uh, we won in the African Commission. Surprisingly, the government then wanted to pretend that it was civilized. They comply with a number of the judgment. But in the case of Africa now, there is the African Court on Human and People's Right. Mr. President, you have to join us in this battle. Because I will put a lot of money in the pockets of our colleagues. If the government can be persuaded to make a declaration to allow individuals and NGOs to access the African court. Only 10 countries have done so. Nigeria has not done so. So we need to get our country to make the declaration. The last one is section two, five, four, C of the constitution amended. Now allows Nigerians to apply all international labor organization conventions that have been ratified by Nigeria. This can be enforced in the national industrial court. And this is already going on. And a lady was pregnant and was sacked, no suspended. She went to court and the court awarded her 15 million Naira and condemned what happened to her. Of course, I'm aware of the case that the NBA has just lost. And Mr. President, you must appeal that case. Where a lady was suspended, dismissed in the police force because she became pregnant without marriage. At the time that happened, a former IG was going out and had impregnated a policewoman. And nothing happened to him. I think you need those facts, sir. But what happened, as soon as we challenge the man, one, I think, Idris, he quickly arranged a marriage with the lady. But I'm saying, I am saying, sir, that the judge who has just dismissed our case did not read the case of Willa and Attorney General of the Federation, decided in 2012 by Adagay, as it then was, where similar provisions that you can marry if you join the police force as a woman for three years. Two, if you are going to marry after the three years, you need the written permission of your commissioner. I mean, remember my chambers, my wife said this was terrible. So she went to court and said, will our judges understand this? I said, no, let me try. And he just said, since these provisions are not applicable to men, they are totally against the provision of section 42 of the constitution and article two of the African charter. Because a man can join the police force and impregnate one or two women, nothing will happen. And you don't need permission. And the Attorney General's office came to say, we are protecting women. That is why we made the law. But I think we have to also move along, not just with, I don't cite examples of Europe and America. Please, let's look at what other African countries have been. A woman, a case has just been decided in Kenya that if you have a housewife, you have your wife and you say you are a housewife. She's entitled to be paid because she's taking care of the home and taking care of the children. Another one which interests you. Here what you call judges rule. Now, because women tell a lot of lies. So if there is rape, you don't know that is why. If there is rape, you don't believe the evidence of the victim. There must be a collaboration. Judges made rule, no judges. But a woman, a judging Kenya has questioned the rationale and there is very it's against the dignity of women to say you must have witnesses when you want to give evidence. And then in rap case, you don't do it in the marketplace, you hide. So why do you want witnesses to witness, I mean, to give evidence in the case? I therefore want to submit. Mr. President, that's in spite of section six of the constitution, C six six. We now have cases where our courts have recognized the right socioeconomic price of Nigerians. Our duty as lawyers is to expand the base. You know, we must try and continue to go to court and get judgment. But it's not enough, and that is my conclusion. It's not enough to have this judgment if we cannot enforce them. And that is where the bar comes in. All the cases where damages are awarded in Nigeria daily by judges, they are mere psychological victories. Because no attorney general will grant you permission to enforce the judgment unless you have a deal where the bulk of the money may disappear. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Femi Falanu SAN, for your very passionate, detailed and very deliberate delivery on that topic. Ladies and gentlemen, I hope we are having a thought provoking session so far. We will now move on to our plenary conversations. I'll be inviting our moderator, a Nigerian broadcast journalist, TV presenter, subject matter expert, project management and IT consultant, who will then invite the panel discussion to come up stage. Please join me as I welcome Kaya Day Akintemi, who will be the moderator for the first plenary conversation. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Well, I'll do things slightly different because my big brother, Femi Falanu, said, things have got to be done differently. And I will start by saying good afternoon again and expect a response. Good afternoon. My lady. The Arnold Justice Helen Gomajer, Justice of the Supreme Court, the chairman, or the president rather, of the NBA, Mr. Limide Akata. The senior advocates and other members of the NBA, including the general secretary who I've been introduced to, distinguished ladies and gentlemen and members of the press. It's going to be a very interesting conversation today. As was said by Mojuwade, my name is Kaya Day Akintemi. And I am here because this is something that I find extremely important to have as a conversation. I believe very strongly that lawyers will often say ignorance is not an excuse in law. And it is not only lawyers that say it now. If you go to a bus garage, a taxi driver, a touts will tell you, if you know, no, that will not be excuse. And that is the same thing, ignorance is not an excuse in law. The first thing that I looked at, which the president of the NBA also mentioned was section 13. And I thought it is very apt to look at that section because it clearly states that it shall. And I know the lawyers are very emphatic about the fact that when the word shall is used, there is no reason for anybody to say it is not justiciable or not impossible. So we're going to have the conversation. I'm not here to present a paper. So let me welcome first to join us for this conversation, my lord, the Honorable Justice Onoha Ogwe, Chief Judge of Abia State. And while he's on the way here, I will also call on right Honorable Anafyak Luke, Chairman, House of Reps Committee on Judiciary. And coming up next is the senior advocate Suliman Usman, Attorney General and Commissioner for Justice in Sabato State. And also joining us in this conversation is Mr. Emmanuel Korodudu. He's the head of Democracy and Good Governance Echoas Commission in Abuja. And finally, Mr. Cola Olle Oluwadari, Deputy Director, Social Economic Rights and Accountability Project. So the panel is ready and we're good to go. And the first, oh, yes, I am so sorry. We do need, yes, 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 yes. Senior Advocate is the Femi Falanu. Please, we can't discuss your paper without you being here. I should have invited you first, my sincere apologies. I think I'll use the words that my father used to say in those days. He's gone to Jesus now, he's gone to be with Jesus, but he used to say, and those who don't speak Yoruba, when you forget someone or don't remember to call them, you say that death has forgotten about that person and sickness has forgotten about that person. So you will live long, sir, you will live long. Thank you very much. Let's start with section 13 and I would want us to understand that the way I would like to broach this is first for us to understand that this is an opportunity for us to find what the NBA Spidel says it wants, which is a pragmatic solution to the issues. We're not looking to point accusing fingers at this and that, but to find solutions that will endure. So the starting point for me in moderating this session will be, what is the short term solution, the immediate? Because 2023 is around the corner. What's the solution that we can implement immediately? So section 13 is where we're starting from. And I would start with the Honorable Justice, my lord. Help us understand, we have a chapter two that some people have said is non-justiciable, is not impossible. Please help us unbundle. As a George, why do you think people say this? And what is the immediate solution that you can come up with in terms of how to make it such that it's either justiciable or we're finding an alternative that makes it possible for Nigerians to get their rights as is stated in the constitution enforceable? As part of housekeeping, please, everyone on this side of the divide, when it's your turn, please remember to press the button so that you can speak. And when you're done, you can please press it again so that you switch it off. Thank you, my lord.
Thank you, Roberto, I'm the chairman of education. Eddie Moreno has taken us to session 13 to start there. And it's so like with that that session uses the word shall by making it mandatory. The duty, responsibility and all that, all that. The lead presenter has made a good job identifying all the provisions. But I want to make a comment on section six, which has been widely held to make it non-justiciable. Because of the problem we are looking at, and we have talked about immediate, midterm and long-term solutions. We know this, we know the problems, so I want, I don't want to focus on the problems. The problems have been identified, highlighted. I want us to look at solutions. What do we do? What do we do now? What do we do tomorrow? What do we do next week? Those that are interested. So I think there are two major areas. We need massive legislative intervention. I'm happy the honourable member from the house is there. Then legislate judicial interpretation, robust interpretation in such a way that will bring out the philosophy behind the economic price, as I said in chapter two. And so of course, I already been that. I think there's more. I was telling some people outside that, you know, the course we do not initiate processes. We see to bring the cases to us. The way we would like to see the judges, the lawyers bring these cases to court. The lead presenter has done a good job and following the process of Chief Garnett, who listed on everything, never mind, we could be a better legislature, get the judgment first. Never mind, we need to be able to legislate, get the judgment first. Go to court on all these matters. And that's the way to go. If I am to look at section 660, I look at the way the cases are brought, the couching of the reliefs. 660, if you sit in a situation where you go to court to challenge the authorities listed in 13 for their failure to do those things guaranteed in chapter two. In other words, if government fails to provide education for instance, or to give you food, you go to say government should have, we didn't. But I'm looking at such a way you approach the court. Bring a simple claim that's based on the philosophy. "I am hungry, I want food." Don't mention the failure of governments. I'll interpret it to screw section six. They were entitled to eat. You are not questioning the failure of government to provide the food. If you are questioning the failure of governments, section 660 will apply. I'm making it non-justiciable. But if you are going as a right, as a claim, "I am hungry", declare that I'm hungry, make an order that the food should be provided. Based on the philosophy, I think it can be done. I'll interpret it accordingly, to give advice to chapter two. That's the only comment I'll make on that area. But let me go to another area which is of grave importance and concern to me. The second bit of this workshop is fragmenting measures for governments accountability. That's the area I want to speak on, accountability. You find out that the government, like the last thing the lead presenter said, impossibility. I've always been bothered about enforcing judgment, it's not enough. If you say justiciable, what we are looking at, you go to court, government, the court will give you an order. You get a judgment, after that, what next? How do you enforce it? The usual thing is that if you make a monetary award, the government will say they don't have money. The government never has money for anything. Salaries are not paid. Contracts are breached. A whole lot of things. And what's the difference? No money. Even if you say, "Let's make chapter two justiciable", government will tell you, "I have no money to provide the education. I have no money to give you food." So what next? What do you do after that? So I think there will be need, that's where the legislature should come in, for some interventions to release more money to the government and check the one they have. Because especially at the state levels, because we tend to focus on food, and food, and food. But the highest level of responsibility in dealings is at the state level. Now the governors have become kings. And traditionally, kings do no wrong. So they do no wrong. They are above every system, above every law. They are not accountable to anybody. So I think there must be a way of making them accountable. And that's where the legislature will come in.
Thank you very much.
Can I mention one or two state suggestions here?
Okay. Okay, yes.
Do I go? Okay.
Go ahead, man.
I think the the whole state structure, protocol, executive, is too unwieldy. We can make laws fixing the number of commissioners at the state level. SAS, PS, SSs. Because PS have their own PS, and the PS have their own PS. You've got a local government level, secret castle or something, that the PS have a PS. And all paid with money. So how can you have money for more important things? So that is what they are, some misses must be stopped, some must be made. You remember the national reports. Then...
I think most of governors is too high. That can go around. Thank you. Now, so that we can go around, I'll request that we keep the answers really short because we want to be able to get around everybody quickly and then get a chance to allow members of the NBA who are here, who also want to either share opinions or ask questions to join in this conversation, it's not a one-way street, thank you. Now let me go to the Right Honorable Anafyak Luke, who is the Chairman of House of Reps Committee on Judiciary. We have a constitution that a lot of Nigerians have complained consistently forever, from 1999, even before 1999, when it was being put together. There were Nigerians who were complaining that the constitution of the Nigerians that were put together to write this constitution or the composition of it, those people who were put together to write it, did not represent we, the people. And that is seen in the fact that chapter two is now being questioned as non-justiciable. Can you help us understand, Right Honorable, what is it we need to do to get the National Assembly to look at this particular law, this chapter, and say, "We have to prioritize the change within the next few months so that those politicians who are coming in in 2023 will have something that they can sing their teeth into and give us something to bite?"
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator, the chairman, and my colleagues here in this hall. I want to say that I will adopt the presentation of the lead speaker as my thoughts largely. For the first time that coming to an event that the National Assembly has now become the whipboard. And so I was afraid whether the National Assembly, everything is going to be thrown at the National Assembly. But I thank God that the lead speaker had exonerated us one way or the other to say, to say that we have criteria of our legislations which have gone to make some provisions that will make these aspirational goals impossible in our courts. And we've done that in different aspects. If you look at section two, they talked about objectives, educational objective, political objective, even foreign policy objective, and economic objectives. And if you look at each and every of those, you will see that the National Assembly, before now, the legislature, both at the state and at the national level have been able to rise to the occasion in making legislations to speak to these issues. For instance, 15.5, which has to do, I think, a political objective, has to do with an issue of eradication of corruption. Is that 15 sub five? Said, "The state shall abolish all corrupt practices and abuse of power." The National Assembly and the legislature has risen to its responsibility in this regard. And had enacted legislations to make sure that these objectives are realizable, like the Economic and Financial Crimes Commission Act, and then the ICPC Act. All these geared towards achieving that objective of eradication, I mean of eradicating a corruption. And then if you look at the aspirational goals as it has to do with education, you find out that the state, let me start from the National Assembly where I say, I keep speaking about the state because I had the opportunity to be at the state legislature before now. And so the legislature, both at the state and the national, risen to its responsibility to make sure that we achieve this goal. For instance, that's why I said I adopt this presentation of the lead speaker. The Composary Free Universal Basic Education Act makes provision for the financing of education, the responsibility of both the state and the local government. And that is, that has been provided for. And it's an objective as captured in that act which reflects the educational objective, I mean, the educational objective of chapter two. Then if you look at the economic aspect, where there are provisions that the country, they should ensure that businesses are not concentrated in the hands of one or two persons or few. And then you find out that there are bodies are to be set up to regulate ownership of businesses in the country. There are legislations to that effect. And all other ones. So we are not in lack of legislation. The challenge for me, I want to, I want us to situate where we found ourselves, away from law, away from an MBA thing. Let us look at the country as a whole. Let us look at individuals who operate this. First, it starts with conscience. Yeah, we are talking about law here, we are talking about the legal system. But if you don't have men of conscience, you keep having them turning the legal system upside down. And so there are people in the executive and you would realize that without passing the buck, the greatest challenge of getting this thing to be done is in the executive. That started with the responsibility of implementation of the policies. And so like the, without sounding patronizing, what setup has been doing and which the lead presenter has said, there are many judgments that have been given. And we found out that the judgments have not been enforced. And we don't have the strength to enforce this judgment which would have given to, given strength to these socioeconomic rights. And so, so that I can give opportunities to others to make contribution. I'm saying that at least for once here, not only by our own assessment, for once, we have not been found wanting as a legislator in discharging our responsibility.
Thank you, thank you. So let me move on quickly then to Mr. Suliman Usman, senior advocate, and Attorney General of Sakoto State. Now, it is clear that the fingers are being pointed at the executive on a consistent basis now. It looks like everybody is saying it's all down to the state government, local government, and the federal government. From your perspective, can you help us understand why has it been so difficult for anybody to be able to get their right on the chapter two of the constitution? Why has it been so difficult? Some people have mentioned that it might be the problem with financing it, but also the honorable, sorry, my lord, has said that there's wastages left, right, and center. So help us understand, apart from wastages, what is it that stops you as governments, executive arm of government, being able to implement this?
Well, other speakers already stated it. There are a lot of issues even from the principal legislation itself, the constitution, by making the rights non-justiciable. If you look at section six, subsection, paragraph C of the constitution. Apart from that, the political will also of government matters a lot when it comes to deepening the realization of these rights that have been classified as fundamental objectives and directive principles for state policy. It depends on what you take as your priority. For instance, in Sakoto State, we give a lot of premium to realization of those rights. We have done a lot of legislation to crystallize their protection and enforcement. We come up with laws, very impressive laws, that have ensured, for instance, education. The basic education is guaranteed as a right. Apart from the Sakoto State Universal Basic Education Commission law that has recognized it, domesticating the Ubek Act, we also enacted the Sakoto State Right to Education law, whereby it is even a criminal offense for a child to deny, to be denied enrollment in school, especially out-of-school children. Under that law, we also ensure community contribution, apart from the responsibilities of government. We are not just relying on budget, we've made it a duty of all public officers, including civil servants, to contribute to a fund under the leadership of the Sultan that will do intervention, just like the Ubek will do intervention. And they have been doing a lot in ensuring that education is guaranteed at that level. In fact, our educational rights are more than that of basic education, even secondary school education. Because payment of YAC fees and NACO fees are done by state government on a regular basis. And in Sakoto State, nobody pays school fees. But the so-called indigenous and residents attends all public schools free of charge. And the YAC and NACO fees that government pays, 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 even including those of private schools. Apart from that, when it comes to healthcare, we ensured that the primary healthcare is also made a right that is enforceable under the Primary Healthcare Development Agency Law 2016. These are all some of the very impressive laws that we instituted when we came in as government. In all the 244 wards of Sakoto State, we have an ambulance. In all the 244 wards, we have a healthcare facility, either a dispensary, a primary healthcare, or in all the local governments, so three local, we have a general hospital. And right now, we are building a university teaching hospital, 1,000 bed, that is going to be one of the largest health institutions in the whole of West African sub-region. Aside from establishing a state of the ad diagnostics center that has recently been commissioned, having all kind of diagnostic equipment and tools that will go a long way in reducing the wastages that is being incurred in medical tourism. So we understand that these rights are fundamental because fundamental rights themselves that are enshrined in chapter four cannot be concretized and benefited from if you do not guarantee the enforcement of socioeconomic rights. That is why we need constitutional amendment, we need legislations also. We also need judicial activism. Apart from that, we need citizen engagement. The NGOs like SARAH, what SARAH is doing and other non-governmental agencies and CBOs must be sustained. We also need to make sure that institutions are set up. Recently, we have developed and worked on a bill to ensure that we also have a human right commission at the state level. Because we felt the National Human Rights Commission has done a lot since its establishment, but we need to also do that at state level. We must understand that, given the federal nature of our system, it is not just the responsibility of federal government to set up institutions. We have to also set up institutions that will deepen the realization, the guarantee, the recognition and protection of some of these rights.
All right, before I let you go then, can you help us understand, normally, when government is planning, you plan based on data. With all the things that you have mentioned as things done by Sakoto State government, how many kids do you still have on the streets that are not going to schools? How many people, young girls and young women who are not in hospitals and they're having high mortality rate, both for mothers and for babies? Do you have the statistics? Has your effort made any difference?
There are statistics, especially what are the state government and with UNICEF. Recently, we entered into collaboration with UNICEF to remodel the agronomic school education system, to make it modern, so that it will have curriculum. And product of those schools can be given certificates so that they can be able to work in institutions of government that are related to that aspect of learning. And that is helping a lot in ensuring that the out-of-school children, especially the al-majri system, is being revamped. We are doing that because we also are witnessing the effects, the ripple effects of the non-charl- the ripple effects of the nonchalance of government over the years. Because that is what has been raised to mandatory. And even the problems we are facing in the, not is the the Voko Haram. This are some of the ripple effects of bad governance. So there is a nexus between the justiciability of socioeconomic rights and the quality of governance that is being provided. And we must do that in order to develop and live in a nation where peace and justice reign.
And we say amen to that. Okay, let me move on to SERA. And a funny incident or funny story came up on social media just a couple of days ago, where Governor Nasu Arufai was claiming that SERA is based in Lagos and asking for rights for information in Kaduna that you should be, in a manner of speaking, domesticated in the Kaduna for you to be able to ask for that right. Help us. Mr. Oluwadari, help us get an understanding. Is it that CSOs and NGOs and other organizations that should be called or do get called Human Rights Association, is it that they're not doing enough in terms of going to court or challenging constituted authorities, as they're called, to bring them to book to say that this is what the constitution says? And it didn't say you may or may not do this. It says you shall, as executive arm of government, make these provisions in chapter two. Is it that people of your likes and people who are also with great good intentions like you are not doing enough?
Thank you very much, Mr. Carey. I nearly thought that question was rhetorical, given what SERA has been doing over the years. And to answer the question simply, no. It's not because civil society organizations like SERA and others have not been doing what they should do or that the people are not engaging, both with civil society organizations and with the government. Speaking from our experience at SERA and the topic we are discussing, I would think the issue lies in talking about pragmatic approaches with the judiciary. And that is why I very much like the approach taken by Mr. Obani when he was making his opening address, that it is about, this is not a blame game, but where they would know where the problems lie and the solutions. So SERA has more than, presently as you're talking, we have more than 32 lawsuits in court, both in the municipal courts and regional mechanisms like rec was. And we have more than 11 judgments that have not been obeyed by government. So that itself speaks to what we have been doing. And the support, and these suits sometimes have more than 200 Nigerians joining us to show that it's public interest litigation. But I think with the judiciary, what Mr. Fallon said earlier is actually what plays out. So we have moved from your Kodya case when it comes to justicability of chapter two. We are more rightly put now in the AG on those states and the federal government. That is what applies presently. But what we've seen mostly is that the court seemed to assume that we are still in the Okody era. And so the decisions and the reasoning of the court appears to toe that line, and that is the problem. And that speaks directly to incidents you mentioned about the FY Act, for instance, and its applicability to the states. You wouldn't be surprised there are judges of the High Court, of the Federal High Court, who still think that the FY Act would not be of general applicability. And public interest litigation, we have, we have costs granted against SERA, for instance, which again, it doesn't portend the discussions we've been having over time. And so what needs to be done is that understanding that if chapter two is justiciable, and I firmly believe it is. So it's not a matter of legislative interventions. It is a matter of judicial activism. And the courts have been beaten out over time, so it's really not new. And I think in that regard, the bench has more influence than the bar. Because a lawyer just fires a suit, the bench has the right to do a lot of things, including obiter dictum, including dissenting opinions. But we've not seen a lot of that in the courts. And that's why I very much like what Mr. Fallon said when we were speaking about the African Charter being, it's a very veritable tool. It's been domesticated, so section 12 of the constitution would not apply in that instance. But what have we seen from the litigations in court? Even relying on several provisions of the African Charter, it would appear that that understanding is not there. Which is why you see for SERA, for what we do, for instance, even from our name, Socioeconomic Rights and Accountability Project, we seem to be doing more of the A than the S and the E presently, which is not what we set out to do. So if we had decided to look at socioeconomic rights, but because of what we've seen corruption has done to not align those rights, which is why we're talking about accountability. And I'm happy that it's part of the team of this event to make government accountable. But in this instance, I made chapter two to make it justiciable as it were. We know it's to be a law process, even though we know the national assembly is doing that presently. So what we need to do is through the courts, and the courts do make law, we are all aware. So it's very easy at that level, understanding what public interest litigation is, not only to encourage lawyers to do more, but to state the law as it were. When it comes to enforcement of these decisions, I think we can take that up at a very different level. And then in that case, the executive will be able.
Okay, I'll come to honorable justice in just a minute. But before I do that, I do recall that Mr. Fermy Falano mentioned a long list of ways that you can achieve the same objective as what we're trying to achieve here from different sections and chapters of the constitution. And I know that you, as a very good lawyer, a senior advocate, you do find ways to get the results that you want from the court. What is it that the MBA and other lawyers need to know, to understand? Is it issue of training, and I won't make suggestion, you make the suggestions? What needs to be done to get Nigerian lawyers to push the boundary in terms of getting the results of chapter two? Sometimes maybe from going to other chapters of the constitution to get the same result anyway. What do we need to do?
The MBA has human rights committees in all the branches. The MBA has more territorial spread than any NGO in Nigeria. So if you are talking about 125 human rights committees across the country, I think we can do a lot. And I have suggested this, I think the MBA has started to look at this. Section 70 of the Police Establishment Act 2020, section 34 of the Amshray of Criminal Justice Act provide that not less than once a month, a chief magistrate shall visit all the police stations in his or my hysteria district. What we have suggested, get members of the human rights committees in each of our branches to guide the magistrate, or even possibly accompany the magistrate. And I'm happy some branches are doing this. Now, during the visit, the magistrate is empowered to grand bear that, recommend those who should be taken to court, and order the release of those who should not be in the station. For EFCC, ICPC, all of them. The charge out of the Federal High Court shall designate judges to visit all the other facilities, detention facilities in the country. Now, the MBA should guide us to guide the chief judge to carry out his duty under the law, and fight to sue the chief judge to compel him to designate judges. All the legal detention body, SSIs, EFCC and the rest of them, who will be over. Even of lawyers, lawyers are asked. The other one, every police station in Nigeria, by virtue of section 66 of the Police Act, shall have a lawyer, every police station shall have a lawyer to monitor kill rights. That means at least five fellow lawyers, even from the point of view of addressing unemployment of young lawyers. Now, if you have lost money, the human rights in every police station will go a long way to prevent abuse of human rights. But on socioeconomic rights, the MBA can do a lot by organizing seminars, training program for its member. Because all of us are still living in the past, oh, they are not justiciable. We are asked, there are laws that have been made by the national assembly. We also need to take this law to the state houses of assembly to also get them to adopt them. I mean, Sokoto, for instance, and I want to congratulate the Attorney General. I was harassing the governor, please, you are a senior lawyer, avoid the bench harassment. They cannot decide that you have not adopted the Charles Wright law in your state. I'm happy today Sokoto has done that. There are still about six or seven states left who are saying, oh, it's against our religion. It's not against your religion to send your own children abroad. But for the children of the poor, you are talking of religion. So we are getting, like the honorable said, the national assembly has done well, because we are punishing them. But we must also get the state houses of assembly to adopt these laws so that the lives of our people can be better. But the MBA can do a lot. The MBA under Apata now has revived the culture of going to court to challenge a constitutional act of government and official integrity. And I want to thank you because, and I can say this publicly, I can say this publicly. Mr. Apata has surpassed my expectation. Please keep it up, you know. And that, you know. So I think the MBA is on the right course. We need a continuity. We need to continue to after Mr. Apata's tenure. Thank you very much.
Okay, so thank you very much, Mr. Falano. So let me come to Mr. Okrodu. Now we are approaching 2023. We're just months away from the next general election. It is mandatory that the president should have signed the bill that was put before him. And we thank God, a lot of people were celebrating on social media that the president did his job on this occasion by signing into law that which will make our election happen. And as we approach that date, when there will be election, it means there's going to be a lot of electioneering campaign. There will be promises made by all kinds of human beings who say they are politicians. And when they make all these promises, and we have a constitution that says this is what people are entitled to, and these politicians make those promises that you're entitled to it, vote me in, I will make it happen. In terms of good governance, what is it we need to do to make it such that we can hold them to their words and we can claim our rights as citizens based on what the constitution in chapter two says?
Thank you so much. I, I guess for us at the ECOS level, we have nomadic frameworks that do address a lot of these. If you look at the ECOS convergence principles and the Protocol on Democracy and Good Governance, it talks about inclusivity for political parties. It talks about parties actually promoting socioeconomic rights. So within this context, when we have visitations to member states holding elections, a lot of these are spelt out leading political parties in these countries. And we don't leave it at that. We have engagement to the judiciary. So I'm really excited to be here, to be talking about this with the members of the bar. Mr. Malena Senior, Mr. Fermy Falana, will tell you, we've been working on seeing how we can even encompass all of this within the region. We are trying to reactivate the West African bar station. We had addressed the issues of access to justice. And within the context of access to justice, we are looking at justice that has been transited. I dare say, what we are discussing today is like justice transited. You've kept chapter two to remain the way it is, and you've not allowed it to metamorphosize with the society and actually get this right to be justiciable. And I think within the context of the political realm, if you do not engage the political actors in a very positive light, it's always difficult for you to get them to hold on to their promises. In our own context, in our own climate, in the West African region, you don't have parties designing manifestos. Parties just give you programs they want to implement. I remember having a conversation with the head of state once. And he said to me, you really have to be careful with the agenda you're pushing. If you want parties to design manifestos, you are almost going to be enunciating another problem that we've had with religion. Because when we get so sink along manifesto and party lines, it's always difficult to address the challenges that will come up. In response to that very positive counsel from His Excellency, we started working on a bipartisanship policy. And within the context of this bipartisanship policy, what we want to achieve, we are trying to get all of these social rights embedded as those issues that whenever they are brought before the parliament for discussions, the parliament would look at them from the context of general interest of the people and within the context of socioeconomic rights. So going into 2023 for Nigeria, Nigeria is a peculiar one for us at the ECOS level. If you want to engage Nigeria, we've structured a program to engage Nigeria from the Six J political zone. And we are looking at meeting the leading political parties and looking at how they've designed intervention programs for their party as domicile in that state. If you look at the practice, the practice was to go to the capitals. And if you go to the capitals, you are not engaging the state as a whole. But in going in country to speak to political parties and understanding what these manifestos are all about, I think it opens up the space. Then some other thing we've tried to do with civil society actors is to look at the possibilities of jump starting a process where they can bring up public interest litigation. And time and time again, when there are issues leading to elections and certain persons are precluded from going into the electioneering space, we instigate through national human rights commissions and network of civil society human rights monitors in the region to try and bring up public interest litigation on these issues. And in one of our member states, a matter was brought like this before the ECOS Community Court of Justice, and the court entertained that matter. And this particular candidate was given the opportunity to contest in that election. So public interest litigation, I think, is one solution we should adopt if we must get these rights to be justiciable. And I think a lot is being done by SERA. We welcome the manner and approach with which they approached the ECOS Community Court of Justice. We are also trying to see how we can get the judiciary involved in participatory democracy. And in doing this, I think judicial activism is very key. And there are only few persons and few lawyers doing it in the region. Mr. Fermy Falana, we attest to it. We just had a meeting recently in Accra to push the agendas for chair of bar station. It was unfortunate we didn't have your chair in there, but we had Mr. Fermy Falana. And it did not only just push that agenda for us, to get lawyers to be able to practice across board and across jurisdiction in our region. In doing this, what do we want to achieve? The end goal is to get lawyers push for these socioeconomic rights. And in addressing this, I must highlight a particular section that our advisory is to look at. Article 25 of our Protocol on Democracy and Good Governance actually solicits for a program like this. You should have social dialogue to look at how you address poverty elevation and foster development in any of the member states. And going down to article 26 and 27 specifically, it talks about harmonizing and integrating economic and financial and banking policies. If we do this in that way, there's also an open opportunity there for us to look at how we can set up multinational agencies that can actually support the process of providing funds to push for this justiciable right to be enforced and actually optionalize within the context of our member state. I think the final thing I want to stress here is this. I think the judiciary is the most difficult part. I think the bench, so to say, is the most difficult part. We've been finding a lot of hardship in engaging. Because when we look at most of the matters that do come to us, basically in electioneering matters. And if you want to get the judiciary to speak to you, in the last 2019 election, I tried to have a back-channel conversation with the justice of the Supreme Court. She was my lecturer at the law school. And she did give me a reply, and she said to me, it's difficult for us to come into the electioneering space as we approach election. And I did explain to her that what we are trying to do is to bring out some of these subtle issues that will come up and become matters of litigation that will get to the Supreme Court. And most of the time, we found out in different member states, the way the Supreme Court tends to interpret And most of the time we found out in different member states, the way the Supreme Court tends to interpret. A particular matter that is contentious around election is always interpreting and looking above behind his shoulders. At what the executive arm is doing. And that has brought a lot of concern to us at the aircos level. Looking at the capture of the judiciary. And I think the only way we can get past this, if we have justices. Who are very, very firm on judicial activism, I think it will help a great deal. There are very few Supreme Court judges or judges of constitutional court in the Franco phone jurisdiction. Who would want to do this? I think one of the concerns we have and why. Chapter two is still the way it is. Because of the appointments of the chief justices and the president of the constitutional courts. If you owe your appointment to the executive arm, there's always a tendency that when it requires interpretation. For the ordinary community citizens to benefit. You would not get that kind of interpretation you need. And to go past this, we want to strengthen the bar session and reactivate the West African bar association. And I'm so happy, Malena Senior, Mister Femi Falana is working with us on this. We've gone a step further to see how we can curb the excesses of the executive arm on the judiciary. By looking at how we can bring a forum of ministers of justice. This has gone to almost a final stage. We've done this with the West African Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights. And also the support for UNOAS, United Nations Office in the Sahel. West Africa and the Sahel. And I think if we're able to get that body, some of these challenges where it's where it is in here. We can always talk to these lawyers and talk to these attorney generals and ministers of justice. For them to understand that you need not hold on to these compromises. At looking at the back of your shoulders to interpret laws to suit one arm of government alone.
Thank you very much. So I now have to come back to, there you can clap, yeah. Thank you very much. A lot of work is being done at equals level and that's extremely useful. So let me come back to the honorable justice, my lord. A number of things have been said here now and I am sorry, I'm going to have to put some fire under the seat of the bench. There is a saying that the first step towards finding a solution. Is acknowledging there is a problem, identifying the problem, then you will find the solution. Is there a lukewarmness or something like a timidity on the part of the bench? That makes it such that it is not aggressive enough to push the agenda. That makes it possible for some of these things to be interpreted correctly. And for us to get the solution that is required. Don't let us talk about what happens after judgment are delivered yet. But in terms of getting the judgment that is required.
I don't think so. I don't think there is that, generally. The bench has done well. I have a few cases of those who are afraid. Of those who are afraid. But generally, we have enough judgments. And you know, I have indicated my passion, my challenges in the, if I will say that you not go there. I'd like to say something on there because I've answered the first part. The bank generally has not done badly. Generally, but you see the problem we have, we have talked so much grammar here, beautiful theories. But the final thing is, okay, look at the experience with chapter four. How have you enforced judgments on that chapter four? For instance, monetary damages, how many governments pay? So what we do, I told you I'm interested in practical solutions. Having been at a bar. Very active from the bar, I went to the bench from the bar. I like to look at solutions. So can I suggest?
Before you look at solution, my lord, before you look at solutions. I am quite keen on if you were to say in terms of percentages. Would you say that you will score the bench sixty, seventy or eighty? In terms of aggressive solution to solving the problem? And if you scored the bench a lower mark, what then will be the solution going forward? Because like I said earlier, if we say that the bench has done well, the legislature has done well. The executive according to Sokoto state has done well, then we really have no reason to be here. We have no conversation to have. So please help us just.
Let me say, my state, for instance, I don't know how many cases have been brought to court on this matter. Public interest litigation, how many of them? That's why I said, I said it earlier on. The law should come to court, approach us. We have not come to know whether I'm able to say or not. First, I have given you an example here that if we are to count it properly, how I will interpret it. That shows that I am ready, if you can, to be proactive. So what you call judicial activism. Some of us believe in it. But you cannot be an activist if there's no case before you. There has to be a case before you. But those cases are not before us. They are not being brought. For those that have been brought, where are we? That's the second nice bit now. I think the M B A can come in here. I made a suggestion, the M B A should open a register, a blood book for every attorney general. Who is part of a disobedience of a court order, enter his name there. Let his name back to us. Because the state government, the state governors are able to get away with a lot of, a whole lot of this because. They have no regard for the opinion of the attorney general. And if we can have the commissions, the human rights commission of the M B A, in all the parties. Bring a lot of pressure on the state government. Our greatest problem in Nigeria is at the state level. The greatest threat to rule of law and democracy are the governors. If you've been pressured upon them to obey disorders. You say, come to court, just to see ability, just to see if it means I'll give you judgment, isn't it? You can, after the judgment, what happens? That's the area. Let's have suggestions. How does the M B A coming to prioritize executives? To obey court orders. They are not obeying court orders at all the levels. The pretty sad. I did one case against local governments, honorary appointed officers. Come and see the level of pride in them that they will not obey the other. I had to send a few of them to the prison. That's what we are talking about.
All right. Thank you very much. Let me very quickly ask Mister Femi Falanu there. Based on, ladies and gentlemen, please.
So I think we just have to look at our system and we must learn from what others are doing. The bar is key to the institutionalization of the rule of law. In the years, during the last election, President Trump. Got sixty-two cases fired, sixty-two. That was between November and January. Before the inauguration, all the cases were dismissed. As in some cases, the judges had to ask the lawyer from the bar, are you insisting that there is fraud? I give you ten minutes to show evidence of fraud. If you are unable, I send your name for discipline. And most of the lawyers withdrew. For here, those cases will have, be going on by now. So we have to get the bar to take control. The point my learning friend has just made. They are terrorists. There's no government. An attorney general is here. Once a judgment is given against a government, the governor tells to the attorney general, what do we do? Most of our attorneys, who appeal and file a motion for stop, the appeal will not be pursued. So again, we must get the M B A to monitor attorney's general. One has just happened. Again, before I go there, President Clinton, very popular American president. When he came back as president. The Arkansas bar charged him for lying on oath and for embarrassing the bar. He was suspended for five years and made to pay a fine of twenty-five thousand dollars. The Supreme Court saw him. Can you give us reason why we should continue to appear in the Supreme Court? He simply said, please, I will no longer appear. Just on his own. Now it was left. An attorney general wrote to her neck, don't obey this court order, pass it forward. Now they couldn't get the M B A to move against him. The human body moved against him. And they suspended him as a senior advocate for three years, but that was not all. The man who was not allowed to be sworn in, due to the advice of the attorney general, went to court in Calabar. And the court declared that this attorney general is not fit to hold any public office in Nigeria. Luckily for him, he had left as attorney general, but the court prohibited him for lives. The Supreme Court just upheld that decision till December. So that guy cannot hold any public office in Nigeria. So we must do the same thing for attorney's general. That encourage disobedience of court order. The guy is there now, went to the court. And said, we are not going to obey this order, we are not going to obey that one because of national security. I beg your pardon. National security is part of section forty-five of the constitution. The last point, sir, there is a law, a provision of a law, section eighty-four. Of the Sheriff and Civil Process Act. Which requires you to obtain the fiat of the attorney general. Who are defeated in court to allow you to garnish the account of the government. The Supreme Court has tried, you know, to say, once the attorney general is a party, you don't have this permission. But for other cases, and I think the M B A also has to take interest in this. And I find this on this. Luckily, the attorney general at the Federation has said, please, Mister Fallon. Allow all the attorneys general in the country to gain, so that we can have this matter resolved once and for all. So that's section eighty-four. Has to be challenged. Luckily, in the case of Father Me and the president. Justice Abaki said, if we don't allow the last of the army to come to court, which attorney general would do so? Because it's nineteen sixty, no attorney general. As soon the government of which is a part, therefore, we must encourage public interest litigation. For judges, we must go back to what used to happen up to the seventies. Court of the court, whoever you are, the judges who apply the law of content. Go and obey the court order, you'll be given a number of days. If you don't agree, you go to prison. That no longer happens in our country. So we must go back to that era. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Just before we begin to take questions, I just want to ask one question from. The right honorable. The question I'd like to ask is, you mentioned a number of things that has been done by the legislative arm of government. In terms of I C P C and a number of other initiatives that has become an act of law. That helps to secure the rights of citizens in so many ways. Where are the gaps today? Because obviously there are still quite a few gaps. And are there bills in the National Assembly today that are waiting to be completed? They're still sort of like languishing in the first reading or second reading. And what can be done to aggressively push them so that they become law?
Okay, I'm answering immediately to that. I would speak to the section eighty-four of the Sheriff's and Civil Process Act. I personally have a bill which is at the committee stage, seeking to expand that section eighty-four. And then, and then we have one of my colleague, Honorable Linda Ithazu, who equally had that. And so what we are trying to do is to do a consolidation of those bills and then we are going to push it out of. The committee stage very soon. And then talking about bills, you made mention about. What we have done, getting the constitution to be the people's constitution. Probably you are aware of our trajectory, constitutional amendment trajectory. I will not speak to the time I wasn't around, which was in the first to the eighth assembly. And I will not speak to the time which I will not be around, which is in the tenth assembly, because I don't intend to go back there. So I will speak to the time that I'm around here. You are right, tomorrow we are voting on the. Different clauses of the constitutional alteration. And then I have a copy of the report here with me. And one of the things that we've done is to seek to enlarge the scope of. Economic objectives. We've added food security in a bill number sixty-five. We are altering section sixteen of the principal act to add another, I mean to have another subsection six A. The state shall direct its policy towards ensuring that strategies. That guarantee food security of the nation regarding availability, accessibility and affordability. Of food to the citizens are initiated, undertaken and implemented and a whole lot of other, which time would not permit me to state here. So this is another of such legislation before us. And tomorrow we are going to answer our father's name on clause by clause and thank God that. On the House of Representatives, one that the able leadership of the indie participle right, I will tell you about the B A Miller. Has been able to set and make provisions for electronic voting and then tomorrow. We are going to make sure that we vote on this part of our effort towards that. But one thing I will keep saying, sir, because I may not be given opportunity, let me take this as if it's my closing comment here. We, I, I appreciate what the attorney general of Sokoto is doing. And I will speak to a few issues here. One of them is that I would use a proverb. You started with a Yoruba proverb, but I won't speak the one in my language. But if you permit me, I will get to you, come here, okay, let me take me one way, I want. And so how does it mean that my mother has peace in the stream? If the father does not drink, the mother side would drink from that stream. And I want to use an instance, if we do make an effort as a people to give healthcare to the people, we will suffer. I'll give you an instance, when the National Association of Resident Doctors went on strike. I saw, there's one hospital in Abuja, Sidacris. And if you know that it's big people that would have access to Sidacris. And so they will go in a short time, they get attended to because they are privileged a lot. But guess what happened? A whole lot of the privileged people have to sit for six to eight hours with their money in their pocket. They could not be attended to because all the patients who would have gone to public hospitals were there. All the ones who would have been in Galakia General Hospital were there in that private institution. And so those privileged ones, who probably some of them are policymakers who did not make an effort to provide for healthcare. For the common men suffer, one while there, even with their money and their cards in their pocket. They sat for so many hours before they could be attended to. And so I'm saying this to say that leadership matters. And so one of the solutions we need here is let the members of the bar begin to look at the next leadership recruitment. Don't sit down and say what concerns me, go and register in your ward to vote. Depending on who should lead you in one way or the other. As quick as it concerns Sokoto State. What the governor have done in Sokoto State is typical of him. Again, he's a lawyer. And that's why I said, push lawyers through to become the boss of state and president of country. Please, sir. And then the Speaker of the House of Assembly. And then we had a meeting with, you know, the chief executive never wanted us to vote for. What did they call it? Independence of the legislature and the judiciary. And so it got to a point that the speakers conference had taken a position that we are going to vote for that. And then as a compromise, we are going to give them local government autonomy. And so they did not, we are not still satisfied. So they called for a meeting between the governors forum and speakers conference. And so in the heat of this, I just asked to speak. I lifted up my hand, I said, and I googled immediately, what was the position of a right honorable Aminu Tambua? When he was a member of the House of Representatives? What was the position of Honorable Seri Akedixon when he was a member of representative? On these issues, and I saw them, I said, Your Excellencies, this is, this way you stand as members of the legislature. What has changed? Immediately, Governor Tambua said, nothing has changed in his own case, that he supports. The independence of judiciary and legislature. Seri Aked, Governor Seri Akedixon took that same point. And that was the two governors who pushed a position at the end of it all. We were allowed to go and vote without being removed as speakers of the Houses of Assembly in our respective states. And so I was saying, leadership matters a lot. So more contribute to the best leadership recruitment in the country. More conscience, more. to advance leadership recruitment in the country, more of conscience, more of the country. Because no matter what we say, you take Attorney Generals, whatsoever they do, they will come back and become a nice citizens. We have Attorney Generals of the country today who are standing in courts. Could they have believed that they would face the challenges that they are facing today? And so karma comes quite silently. And whatsoever, whose whatever is doing, whatsoever is doing at any particular point in time, they will come back to sit with us as ordinary citizens. And whatsoever we have to do, let us make sure that we have men of conscience on the seat of power. Leadership is key, and we must look through that.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, are there microphones around? Okay, uh, I'll take three questions at a time so that we can move very quickly. And please, comments reduced or non-existent so that we can just look at the questions being broached. Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Amadou for this opportunity. The, we are looking at the theme is just ability of chapter two of nineteen ninety nine Constitution, pragmatic measure for government accountability. From what we have said in general, I would say that the problem lies more with the judiciary. So I would rather look at it as pragmatic measure for judiciary accountability. Because judiciary is part of the government. And I want us to look at it, it has a lot to do with interpretation. We seem to forget that the Supreme Court is the only court of policy in the country. What the Supreme Court says is the law, is the law. Therefore, when these matters come before the Supreme Court, the way they interpret it has a lot to do on whether or not they are, they can be enforced or whether they are actually justiciable. Now, I want to give just a little example of what happened recently. It has to do with this judicial, um, uh, autonomy, the matter that came before the Supreme Court. The Supreme, the Supreme Court interpreted the law and left the country hanging as you speak on the issue of judicial autonomy. If the Supreme Court had gone further to say that the, uh, the governors must obey this, like this, like this, like this, I think we will not, I will, I will say we are in a hanger situation now, because the Supreme Court has spoken. So the question again is, or the public litigation, the bar has, has proven itself. It is the first, the, 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 the first, uh, 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 gates we meet is the judiciary. First, the local standard, do you have the local standard in this matter? Do you, uh, can you bring this, one of the court rules that you don't have, uh, you don't have locals? That is the end of that public litigation. Now, I want to say that in the award of, uh, the, uh, SEN, in the award of the SEN, is there any consideration given to public litigation interest lawyers? None, that's why most, most lawyers refuse to go to court because they are afraid that that will be, that will act against them. So I would say that it must, if, if the issue of public litigation is added to the consideration for SEN, then you find out that most lawyers will, will start taking part in public litigation. In Nigeria, we have only two, two SEN taking issues of public litigation, that is, Femi Falana and Abde Gouroua. What are the names?
Thank you, thank you. Um, I'll take one here and one there, and then I'll let, uh, okay, uh, Milat would like to very quickly address that. Uh, please, we'll let Milat, um.
The device. Let me just clear that. Uh, that, that, that what you have raised is not quite correct. It's taken into consideration. Um, I happen to be a member of the previous committee, we take it into consideration.
What app? My name is Dr. Moise Banre, and my question is simply to look my brother there. That is it possible to actually remove that clause that is making it unjust, unenforceable? Not justiciable in the constitution? Is it impossible? Second sixty precisely. Because I'm sure you've gone around during the constitutional amendment, you've had a lot of people make presentation on this point. Why is it impossible to just remove it once and for all? And the thing does become like the political right.
Uh. Oh, yes, yes, very quickly. Yes.
Thank you very much. My name is Adlike Ara from MB Ugo Go Branch Kanu. My first question is to Mr. Femi Falana. Um, sir, much has been said about this, uh, um, African charter. But sir, don't you think there is a conflict between it and the constitution? Uh, in the sense that the African charter says all these rights, these socioeconomic rights are enforceable. Can go to court to enforce them. But that is not what the constitution said. The constitution said those rights are not justiciable. Now, we know section one of three of the constitution, that any law that is, that is inconsistent with the constitution is to the extent of its inconsistency void. Now, don't you think although there is, there seems to be a solution in the African charter, that solution has been made void by the provisions of the constitution? And secondly, my question is to my love, the Honorable Chief Judge of IBIS State, very quickly, very quickly. Uh, my lord, um, don't you think that the greatest solution to this problem lies in the judiciary? In the way they interpret the constitution? Although the African charter has some limitations of implementation, don't you think that the court can now say that, uh, no Nigerian can enjoy his right to life if there are no health facilities available for him to get medicine and enjoy his life? In the sense that if he's sick and cannot get medical help, that his right to life has been delegated upon? Or that somebody cannot have, cannot live a dignified life if he doesn't have a job? Or if he has not gotten education?
All right, thank you. Thank you. Um. Okay, come this way very quickly. Uh. Okay, hold on one second, uh, Milat will like to speak, please. Not, uh, yeah.
Well, I just want to say one of the things. I believe that the judiciary is constrained in a certain way. And it is that I don't believe in the arrogance. Like I'm in the Supreme Court. I don't believe in the arrogance at all. The law is what I say it is, no matter how absurd, no matter how contradictory to the very limits of the constitution. There are some things you cannot, you can stretch only just far. So if like the suggestion the last, the last speaker just made, that if you go as far as to say, because uh, someone is poor for certain social reasons and the person cannot afford to feed automatically, and the person dies, automatically the state is responsible for the death of that person. I don't think there's any jurisdiction in the world where that has been carried that far. For example, you could say where there's an authority that says you must give permission for this building to be erected to five floors. And the building is erected up to ten floors. And people die. It is the duty of people to challenge the failure of the authority who gave permission. That is just shit. That is how much you can stretch it. I don't believe in the arrogance that, yes, the law is what you say this because you happen to be up there. The law must, you must interpret the law with a bit of, um, common sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the gentleman that was just going to speak and then, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is DK Gatama. Um, I want to make a twofold intervention. One is by way of a comment. And the second one is a question. As regards the comment, in terms of where the problem lies between judicial activism and probably the inability to do a constitutional amendment or pass laws and what have you. I am also of the opinion that it is more with judicial activity. If we can do, like what, what Mr. Falana said earlier, what is being done in Pakistan, in India, and so on and so on, I think we'll go, uh, somewhere. Now, as regards, as regards the question, for goodness sake, what can we do as a bar, as a profession? To ensure that we change the culture of belief, trust in a leader to the constitution? You believe, you see, in Nigeria, we'll want to believe what the governor says, what the president says, what the chairman of local government says, and that is disobedience to what he will do. It should be what the constitution says. In other words, by way of analogy, what the law says. Whatever the question is, get your answer from what the law says, irrespective of whose ox is going or who is involved. Let us not just consider premoderated factors to guide our decisions, our actions, and so on and so forth. This is just my contribution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, one question from there, uh, the gentleman just next to him, before we go this way and then we'll wrap up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amadou. My name is Adesino Adibiza. Uh, mine is actually, uh, to identify the unfortunate complexity in the Nigerian system. We actually have a very complicated system. And it is a result of irresponsibility and very high impunity of political leaders that we have this situation where we have today. I will not blame those judiciary, but judiciary certainly cannot be excused. What we have is a state where impunity is the order of day. Because we have judgment that has been secured. And I'm happy that CJ of IBIS State made reference to that. Even under chapter four, that you don't get the benefit of judgment that you have secured because of the impunity of the political leaders. And that certainly should be the force to be addressed. And I think that should be a way of penalizing government agencies, political office owners who failed to pay court orders. If we have legislation that makes it an automatic act of content that shall be enforced upon an order being granted or judgment being granted. And the agency or government, uh, uh, political office owners or government agencies, who's at very simply is this to pay that order, fail to pay it, who go in, you know, for content. The one way or the other, we will have a whole lot of people who are responsible for the failure of our system to be put in prison. And also, there is also need for us to look at the issue of
Yeah. We have to close, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. My, my intervention is in the area of what this meeting has achieved from my own perspective in awakening the bar to the responsibility, primary responsibilities of lawyers. Now, the primary call from my own understanding of every legal practitioner is to serve the person of justice. And when I say legal practitioner, I'm not limiting it, that, uh, artificial demarcation between the bench and the bar does not apply from this perspective that I'm speaking. Now, any society that is found enjoying the very essence of the matter stated in chapter two of the constitution is a society that you can comfortably say has come to enjoy justice. So from the historical perspective that Mr. Falana gave, sir, you have helped me to situate what I have considered as the problem that has actually militated against the discharge of that our primary court as lawyers. Because that is an assault on our psyche as lawyers. We were taught from school that we can't do anything about this. And it also means that we have been deprived of the right mindset for us to actually perform that primary call to justice. Because we are told, we are told that this is a no-go area. So, so what this has done for me, and that is why I must thank the leadership of the bar today. And I join you in commending the leadership of, uh, Mr. Oluwudia Apata for supporting Spida to bring us to where we are today. This is simply telling us that awaken to your responsibilities, you lawyers. Our primary calling is to make sure that the society enjoys all the matters enshrined in chapter two of the constitution. But because our psyche has been properized through the training that we got in school, we have been reduced to mere people who provide service for fees and nothing more. That primary responsibility to turn around the socioeconomic situation of the country, we have lost it. We have completely lost. But thank you, Falana, for bringing this, this perspective. And I commend the leadership of the bar, and that is to say that we are given the opportunity to take the lead, not simply in looking for cases for which will be paid, but taking responsibility for the situation in this country. I had cause to say in a meeting that the primary responsibility of recovering this country, reforming this country, and repositioning this country is in the hands of lawyers.
Okay, thank you very much.
It is to the discharge of this function. Thank you very much.
We have a question from a virtual participant.
Let's take that, please.
He says, how can we reconcile the full demand of the right against discrimination in the constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, section forty two and section fourteen three on federal character?
Okay, um, all the questions asked are like the gentleman, uh, panelists. Yep. My lord.
I think let's not concentrate on trading blames who is more responsible, who is more guilty. The bond event is one professional. I said, let's look for solutions. There's a question Dr. Moise asked, why don't we just amend? It cannot be done now, that just included constitutional amendments. You're aware. Before the constitution can be amended again, it will take years. It's not decided. So I think the more practical to be, go to chapter two, lift item by item, legislate on them. That can be done by an act of the National Assembly, you can take an item, legislate on it. Once you make it an act of the National Assembly, it becomes justiciable. I don't even agree that this section sixty is mixed up that too, not justiciable. I just looking at it, what is not justiciable is if you question, if you question an act of omission, if you question an act of omission, it's not justiciable. But if you can, to benefits from chapter two, it's justiciable. That's a view. That's why I say it is a matter of how you catch your claim. For instance, I had cause to, you know, we have dilapidated cost structures. One of our court horse was to such a state that has a human rights lawyer. Say, why not make it a ground of appeal? That under this place, nobody can get justice. It becomes usually that's rude to come and speak grammar. Those are the things, the, the lawyers, you find a humorous class, when they're struggling, they are humorous lawyers. When they start eating very well, they say you don't understand.
Okay.
They did because you are not fat. If you were fat, you would have dropped your activities. So please, find out what I'm saying. I encourage the lawyers, being of this care, catch your claims in such a way that we can give robust interpretation. That's what I'm saying. that we can give robust compensation. That's what I'm saying.
It's true. It's true, my lord.
Yeah, I have the right to be heard.
Yes.
I just want to agree with my brother that invariably, the, this is a, we've been sort of reactionary in our approach, and I agree with Mr. Falana. But reactionary, nobody has, has, has taken a proactive step in, in this, in this, on this matter. For example, I looked at the second chapter, item sixty. It's an opening that can be explored. If you look at the second chapter to the constitution, item sixty, it's an opening that can be explored. And both the bar and the bench can widen this open. Very well. And I was trying to explain, just as my brother just did, that it's a, it's a, it's a right that was, it's a right that can be activated when, and when an offense has been committed by a member of the executive or anybody that has deprived somebody of those rights directly. That was the point I was trying to make. It cannot be at large. It cannot be at large. It must be activated by the deprivation of the right to life. That was the point I was trying to make by giving that example of the collapsed building and all that and all that. So, I hope I've made my point. Thank you.
Okay, that would have to be thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds.
Now more than thirty seconds.
Or law only okuni. Well, for me, I think enforceability of chapter two is quite desirable. But then, you may not be able to achieve that under the circumstance. Because what you have today, if it were to be a concern of the people, the people would have legislated that chapter two would not be enforceable. But because it was foisted as a decree, it becomes, chapter two becomes a problem. So, we must advocate, we must mobilize, MB must take it. In trying to ensure that Nigeria has a people's constitution, a constitution that can be ruled by the Nigerian peoples, not this one. I thank you very much.
Okay. Well, we have to wrap up, and I just want to quickly recognize my big brother as well because I can't see him and not mention Professor Pata to me. Thank you. It's good to see you here. No, okay, just recognizing him. Okay, so as a way of wrapping up, as a way of wrapping up, ten seconds, ten seconds. That was thirty. We'll do this one. Thirty seconds. We've got to go now. That will be the last one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. In terms of looking for solutions, I want to suggest that the judiciary should have its own judgment enforcement arm. Yes. The government is the biggest culprit when it comes to breaking the law. And you still leave law, judgment, enforcement in the hands of the same government. It will never work, except we change our mentality. Thank you.
Okay, so, you're showing up now. In wrapping up, and I will start from Mr. Falana, in one or maximum two sentences.
Somebody wants to know whether there is a conflict between the African charter and the constitution? No, by virtue of section twelve. Actually, what section six, thirteen is saying, six, is that if after section six, there is a provision in the constitution that allows enforcement, that will be no problem. You don't go back to section six. Section twelve of the constitution provides that any treaty between Nigeria and another country or other organizations will be domesticated by the national assembly. The African charter, as the domesticator, is being acted by the national assembly. So, its provisions are allowed by the constitution. And therefore, there's no conflict whatsoever. The last point, I beg you. I think the honorable member of the House of Rep. made the point. We must, as lawyers, go out there and be part of the democratic process. Legos has forty legislators in the secretary, in the House of Assembly, twenty-five House of Rep. members, three senators. If you ask an average Legosian here, who is representing the House of Rep.? He may not know. And so, we need to wake up and assure that we get involved in the parties of our country. Mr. Moderator, on the case of the Supreme Court, my colleague has left. The executive order number ten was properly interpreted by the Supreme Court. The danger of what my colleague is calling for is that if the Supreme Court had said the power of the powers to return or direct their campaign general of the Federation to seize the money of state governments, the danger is that there will be no one to hit to know the person that consists other funds. But what the Supreme Court did was align with this previous decision, particularly AG Legos and AG of the Federation, where President Obasanjo seized the fund of local government in Lagos. And the Supreme Court said, "No, you may not like the slow pass of the courts, but nobody has empowered to act outside the provisions of the constitution." Thank you very much.
Very quickly, your final word, please.
Okay, so for us as syrup, given what we've been doing, I think I can make that commitment that we'll continue to do what we've been doing. And that the various commitments made on all sides, the legislative, judiciary, bar, bench, is better tested at that forum as we continue with the public interest litigation. Thank you very much.
Right, honorable, your final word. And I'm still wondering, why would you not go for another term in office?
No, 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 that's personal. My final word is that I, I, I would be speaking for the judiciary. We've seemed to dump the blame on the doorstep of the judiciary. But we have only used a case of Sokoto to exonerate the executive. How many judgments have we gotten and the judicial pronouncement that has not been enforced by the executive? Let's say, for instance, the part of aspirational goal is for you to have a good life, welfare, well-being. And then we had adulterated fuel that has poured your fuel pump, that has knocked your engine. And now, if we want to go to seek our right, though, in such case, it's not subjective, just like what my lord was trying to say. Even if they go there and then they make a pronouncement, who sees that day that we discovered that adulterated fuel? And today, who have been held accountable? And so, the executive still is, I wouldn't say guilty in this case. But so what I'm saying is that we should all join our hands. We should all join our hands to make sure that this country works. And then for us to do that, it boils down to leadership, leadership, and leadership.
Yes. My lord, your final word, but while you're saying it, do you still stand on the grounds that lawyers need to be more proactive and push and take the cases to court? Because if they don't, you have nothing to argue.
And finally, on top of that, the NBA should be more active in pressurizing the states' governments to obey court orders. Use your committees, work together with the local bar, the judicial, the chief judges, and ensure that local governors obey court orders. That's where the problem is.
Thank you. And final word from the Attorney General. Mr. Osman.
I think we must realize that government must be held accountable when it comes to issue of realization of economic and social rights. Of course, inherent in social contract is the fact that government must also ensure that it provide for the well-being of the league. Since it is from them that government drives its mandate and authority to govern. So, all hands must be on deck, not just judicial activism, public interest litigation, constitutional amendment, and most importantly, citizen engagement. And this is where I will call on the Nigerba Association, commending their efforts in championing the domestication of the Administrative Justice Act in the States to champion the subscription at the national level to open government partnership so that citizens will be engaged in holding the leadership to account and ensure the realization of the socioeconomic rights.
Okay, last but not the least, Mr. Okor to do.
I want to lay a lot of emphasis on the fact that if lawyers cannot pursue public interest litigation within the jurisdiction of their courts in Nigeria, the Accra Community Court of Justice avails you that opportunity. And I think syrup has done a lot in that regard. And I think with the reactivation of the West African Bar Session, we're trying to open the space for that to be able to be done. And similarly, the platform of Attorney Generals of the region, I think it would be a very enviable place to officialize these rights as contained in the chapter two. I want to encourage lawyers in Nigeria especially to look at peer learning. The Ghanaian bar, as they are today, a lot has been done along this path. And it would be wise if we have that bi-country engagement that will bring all of these best practices to bear within our own jurisdiction in Nigeria. Thank you.
All right. My lord, the chairman of this occasion, the president of the Nigerba Association, senior advocates, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. I want to say thank you to the panel that I've got here today. And I want to say thank you to all of you who have been part of this conversation today. The key thing is obvious. Lawyers have to do more. The bench has to do more. Nigerians, especially civil societies and NGOs, have to do more. So, there's responsibility on every one of us to do a bit more for us to have exactly what we've asked for from what this conversation is all about. So, I say thank you very much to all the panelists, and thank you for being part of this conversation. My name is Kaide Akintemi.
Can we please celebrate our panel discussion, please, and our moderator? This was a very, very robust, enlightening, insightful, and thought-provoking conversation. But can we please hold on for a group photograph? Thank you. So, after this first photograph, I'll invite some members of the audience to join us.